...restaurants and distributes it to the needy.
At the DC Central Kitchen, everybody works on the same side of the table, side by side, whether you're somebody just out of prison, whether you're a young college student trying to get community service hours, whether you're the President of the United States.
Those on empty stomachs tell some harrowing stories.
He actually told me that as a youth, it was safer and healthier for him to be incarcerated in a California youth camp because it provided him three meals a day.
The man began to tell the story about his wife having a very serious medical situation. And because of their limited funds, they had come to a place where they had to make a choice about buying medicines for her or buying food. And on this day, he said, "Our covers are bare."
The good news is each of us can do something, either through volunteer work, by organizing our own food drive, or donating food, cash, or time. This pledge card put out by the No Mas Ambre Foundation gets people to volunteer and make a commitment as to what they will do. For more information, you can visit www.drovetohunger.org. Activists say hunger is about much more than food. It's also about jobs, education, nutritional awareness, and equal opportunity. Still, each step we take means another hungry mouth fed. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
And here's another food for thought. A full 40% of the food produced and grown in the U.S. is thrown away each day. Couponing isn't just for moms and dads on a budget. Many schools are getting in on the act in order to generate funding for the classroom. Rasha Goel explains.
Three LA-area schools, Charles Barrett Elementary, Beethoven Street Elementary, and Mark Twain Elementary, were recently chosen as education heroes for helping make a difference in the lives of their students and communities. It was part of a contest held by the Box Tops Education Program, a national program which helps schools earn cash from coupons.
The way the program works is you, there's a coupon on different brands that you buy at the grocery store. And so things like Honey Nut Cheerios, things like Nature Valley granola bars, Progresso soup, all kinds of different brands that carry Box Tops products. So literally, you clip the coupon off, you send it in your school, and each one is worth 10 cents.
The school collects and turns those clippings in exchange for cash. On average, schools can make over $900 a year through the program, but have a potential to make up to $60,000. The three winning schools were chosen for more than 30 entries for their innovative use of the Box Tops earnings. Charles Barrett Elementary School won for using its Box Tops for implementing an anti-bullying program through the use of performing arts. Beethoven Street Elementary in the Mar Vista area also made the list for funding the Morning Miles Club, giving kids a physical education option, something that had been eliminated by state budget cuts. And the third school, Mark Twain Elementary in Lawndale, was awarded for reviving its school garden, giving inner-city students a chance to learn more about science and ecology.
This helps to give us the funds to keep the incentives going and the students be recognized for their accomplishments.
The Box Tops program is aimed at getting more parents, especially from the Latino community, involved in their children's education.
There's a large number of Latinos who still don't know about Box Tops and the great, the great things that it can do. And also because Box Tops wants them to get really engaged in their kids' schools.
The winning schools received a trophy and a check for 20,000 Box Tops, which is worth $2,000, an incentive to help create more smiles and winning experiences for students. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
Since the Box Tops for Education program began in 1996, schools have earned more than $525 million. A church in South Los Angeles is receiving quite an honor after serving the community for over 100 years. Cindy San Luis reports.
Whoa! Okay, there we go. There's the sign.
Councilmember Jan Perry joins members of this South Los Angeles community to celebrate the city's historic designation of the Episcopal Church of St. Philip the Evangelist.
There's a great history and a great bounty of information about this church and when it was founded that needed to be told. It's a story that needed to be told.
Founded in 1910, St. Philip's Church is the historically oldest African-American congregation of the Episcopal Diocese in Los Angeles. Valerie Lynn Shaw from the city's Board of Public Works is herself a parishioner.
A lot of the abolitionists were Episcopalians, and so the people who came on the Underground Railroad to Ohio where Jan and my ancestors came from, because she's from Ohio and we're from Ohio too, and a lot of them were Episcopalians. So I have fond memories of coming to this church. I remember the incense.
And so in 2010, Councilmember Perry brought the historic designation proposal to the city's Cultural Heritage Commission, where it received support.
We understand that it's a distinguishing mark of recognition for those who conceived and organized and built this parish and its buildings.
This sign designates the church as the City of Los Angeles Cultural Heritage Commission Cultural Monument Number 987. For many church members, the building houses many personal memories.
Being married in the church and having my children baptized in the church and some of my grandchildren.
The church was designed in the architectural style of Spanish colonial revival and still maintains many of its original elements, such as a modified gable roof shape and casement windows. Many agree that this community treasure is deserving of its historical designation. I'm Cindy San Luis for LA this week.
An archive room to display the over 100-year history of the church is being created for the community. The LAPD teams up with the Sunshine Kids Program to help raise awareness about children with cancer. As Gil Reyes tells us, the kids in the program don't let their disease define them.
Cancer survivors and their families took part in a 5K run in Elysian Park to benefit the Sunshine Kids Program.
The Sunshine Kids Foundation, for 31 years, has been doing group activities for kids with cancer. So we organize fun events for kids that are suffering from cancer so they can get together, have fun, forget about their troubles, and just be kids again.
The event allowed children with cancer to prove to others and themselves that they can overcome obstacles. Cancer survivor Sophia Levy got to hang out with children going through what she experienced.
Because my hair's grown and it shows me that how, how kids are gonna look when they're all done with their treatment, that how they're gonna look, how I look.
Right, so you could be with a kid that, say, is earlier on their treatment, but you can show them how it's gonna be, like, it's gonna be okay, your hair's gonna grow back.
Yeah.
After the race, we're going to shuttle the runners in our black-and-white vehicles, Code 3. We're gonna go up to the Elysian Park Academy, and we're gonna have a party.
Children got to ride in LAPD police cars on their way to the party at the police academy. The cheeseburgers were free, so were the games and outdoor activities. This marked the fifth year the LAPD hosted the event. In Elysian Park, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Cancer survivors and patients from Children's Hospital LA, Kaiser Permanente, and Miller Children's Hospital took part in the 5K event. The payout of the $1 million reward offered in the Christopher Dornor case may be in doubt. The battle between the city and digital billboard companies continues, and one councilman goes to Washington to seek funding for the LA River. These stories and more in City Beat. The city of Riverside is the first to rescind its pledge toward the $1 million reward that was offered for information leading to the arrest and conviction of LA cop-turned-accused murderer Christopher Dornor. A Riverside spokeswoman says the city's $100,000 contribution was for Dornor's arrest and conviction. Instead, Dornor died of a self-inflicted wound in a burning cabin while surrounded by law enforcement on February 12th. Although more than 25 donors pledged reward money, many are hesitating to follow through. The Los Angeles Police Department said the money should be paid. So far, two parties have filed claims to the reward. The Los Angeles City Attorney's Office has called on billboard companies CBS and Clear Channel Outdoor to shut off more than 100 digital signs citing a court order that determined the permits for them were given out illegally under a 2006 settlement. People who live near the signs have long complained that digital displays are a nuisance. A representative for Clear Channel Outdoor says the signs will remain up as they await the court's specific guidance. In the meantime, Clear Channel is working with the city to develop a path forward that will allow the reasonable use and location of digital signs in Los Angeles. The Los Angeles City Council has approved Councilman Mitchell Englander's motion instructing the Los Angeles Police Department to develop a system to enable the department and the public to file police reports online. Englander says the technology means officers would spend less time on paperwork and more time protecting the public. The system will be available for use only on lower-level crimes. More serious incidents like violent crimes, sexual assaults, hate crimes, and missing persons will continue to be filed over the phone or in person. Councilmember Ed Reyes recently returned from Washington, D.C., where he met with Senator Barbara Boxer and other leaders to move the Los Angeles River ecosystem restoration feasibility study forward. The study, which President Barack Obama included in his fiscal year 2013 budget, identifies sites where natural habitat can be restored along the river while maintaining adequate flood protection. The Los Angeles River Revitalization Master Plan spearheaded by Councilman Reyes is a 25-to-50-year blueprint to transform a more than 30-mile stretch of the river into a continuous green belt linking communities. Spring arrived on March 20th, marking a season of renewal. And in the Iranian community, it also marks the start of Noorruz, or Persian, New Year. Noorruz lasts for 13 days and is a time for families to get together to share meals, pay visits to family and friends, and even do some spring cleaning. Half-seen displays representing the seven elements of life, namely fire, earth, water, air, plants, animals, and humans, are also a common part of the Noorruz celebration. This year, Councilmember Jose Wezar helped celebrate Persian New Year at City Hall by inviting some of the Southland's most notable Persian-Americans to council chambers.
Iranian or Persian New Year began about 15,000 years ago, when humans became aware of the rhythmic seasonal changes in nature. Iranian New Year, or Noorruz, has no connection or affiliation with any religious or political or social institutions.
Wezar also took the chance to recognize the contributions of the city's Persian-Americans.
We're becoming the world-class city that we know we are because of the revitalization of our heart of the city. A lot of that is because of many Persians who are investing in downtown, who never gave up on downtown.
An art contest helps students learn about diversity. Rasha Goel introduces us to some of the winners of the city's African-American Heritage Month poster contest.
These young faces are the artists of today and visionaries of tomorrow. 24 students across the city of LA were recognized in a special ceremony for the annual African-American Heritage Month poster competition, which was held at the LA Zoo.
You're all winners because you dared to dream, because you were willing to put on a piece of paper or canvas, on a poster, your ideas about how we should celebrate African-American Heritage Month, who are our heroes.
100 schools from kindergarten to high school participated in the competition. This year's theme: African-American pioneers. Winners were selected in six divisions.
This truly is a great event because it, again, underscores the commitment that we have in this city, across this country, and throughout the world on the tremendous diversity, the rich diversity that we all enjoy.
Actress Daniel Watt, who has been traveling across the country for other African-American Heritage Month celebrations, was also on hand to present to the winners.
It was very inspiring to see them all excited and contributing to African-American heritage, even though there were so many different ethnicities, but all sort of honoring the contributions of African-Americans.
Winners received a trophy along with a bag full of art supplies. And the overall winner, known as the best in show, also received $300.
I chose to draw Arthur Ashe because he was one of the best tennis players, but yet he was, he was not like self-centered like most athletes.
I painted Joseph Baker because I love to sing and dance.
And she also painted a little surprise gift for the mayor. These young winners can share their work with the community. Wells Fargo will be displaying this poster highlighting each of the top winners in the six divisions throughout their branches in Los Angeles and Orange County. Reporting from the LA Zoo, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
In this week's list of things to do: learning how to dye fabric, a play about the courage of the school lunch lady, and an exhibit at Moca on happiness. Enjoy a day of crafting at the Japanese-American National Museum on Saturday, April 6th, at the Shibori Dying Workshop. You will learn about how to create pattern and texture on cloth. You will stitch, fold, twist, wrap, and roll fabrics, new and old, in order to produce unique designs and patterns. There will be lots of silks to explore, but feel free to bring some of your own. You'll even get to see a demonstration of how silk is reeled from a cocoon. The workshop starts at 11:00 a.m. The museum is located at 100 North Central Avenue in Little Tokyo. Prepayment is required. Call 213-625-0414 for details. Support your local school and watch an inspiring play. You can catch the play Lunch Lady Courage on Friday or Saturday, April 5th or 6th, at 7:30 p.m. at the Robert F. Kennedy Community Schools Coconut Grove Theater, located at 701 South Catalina Street. Lunch Lady Courage is presented by Cornerstone Theater Company, a multi-ethnic ensemble-based theater company in Los Angeles. The play explores what happens when one cafeteria worker battles for the health of her children and the hundreds of students she serves food to each day. More details can be found at cornerstonetheater.org. And the Museum of Contemporary Art Los Angeles on Grand Avenue presents the first Los Angeles museum exhibition of the work of graphic designer Stefan Sagmeister, who is perhaps best known for his album covers for Talking Heads, Lou Reed, OK Go, and The Rolling Stones, to name only a few. Centered around the designer's 10-year exploration of happiness, The Happy Show is a thematic exhibition of film, print, infographics, sculpture, and interactive installations. The exhibition Stefan Sagmeister: The Happy Show is on exhibit from now until June 9th. Moca Grand Avenue is located at 250 South Grand Avenue downtown. Go to moca.org for details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. A bit of green has sprung up in a gray urban landscape, a makeover that comes with lots of earth-friendly play equipment. Anna Marcos brings us the grand opening of John Quimby Park.
Three, two, one, yeah!
Many of the thousand or so kids from Hart Street Elementary down the street know they will be using this park often. Some of them were on hand to test out the brand-new equipment at Winnetka's John Quimby Park.
Our students already have enjoyed playing on the equipment, as I know all 967 students at Hart will definitely do because our students are from this community.
The $420,000 park was built with Quimby funds, which provide cash for parks from money generated by certain development projects. The kids wasted no time sliding, climbing, swinging, and trying out the state-of-the-art apparatus.
Please treasure the play area and not trash it, so, you know, it's gonna take a team, it's gonna take an effort from all the community just to take care of this park.
Young families, especially in this area, a lot of young families. I mean, look at this, look at Hart Street, where the kids come from here, with about 1,000 students, Hart Street right near here. This is a residential area, and this apparatus is so needed.
This park promises to become the new gathering place in an area where gathering places for children are few and far between. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week. For more information on Department of Recreation and Parks events and facilities, visit laparks.org. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lecityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
Graffiti removal? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Did you know you or your family may be eligible to receive as much as $5,800 from the federal government? Learn how you can receive free income tax assistance from certified preparers to apply for the earned income tax credit. For more information, go to Board of Equalization Chairman Jerome Horton's webpage, which can be accessed at oe.ca.gov. The City of Los Angeles encourages you to make your appointment today at 1-323-980-1221.
L.A. City View Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Please call the other members, find out what their ETAs are so we can start today's council meeting. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm honored, I'm just here as a citizen today, and it's my honor to be in front of each and every one of you. Thank you very, very much. Nice to see all of you. Thank you. Welcome to L.A. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Give my regards to Sacramento. Sure will. All right. Madam Clerk, item eight and nine to go forth with. Mr. Labange?
I was gonna say, I was gonna vote for Phil, he gave the best, shortest speech of the week. All right.
I could say something, Tom, but I won't. And then Bill says, "Oh, really?" Okay, why don't we go to general public comment? These are the general public comment cards. Okay. Barbara Bradbury, if you would please come forward. Donna Pierman, Marion Fogler. Another general car? Okay. Ms. Bradbury, is that you? Please.
Good morning. It's Friday, April 5th. I want to welcome you to the Los Angeles City Council. We're meeting here today at our Van Nuys facility in the Valley, and it's just great to be here in the Valley again. I'd like to take a moment, if I might, before we start. In fact, no, we'll start and then I'll do it. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Alecan Busciano, Engler de Garcetti, Wezar Corret, Coria Labange, Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosendahl, Zion, Weston. Ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Reyes moves, Zion seconds. Next.
Committee resolutions for approval.
Alecan moves, Corret seconds. That should bring us where? To the agenda?
Yes.
Let's run through the agenda. First, items one through five. I've been informed that item two needs to be referred back to committee. So, without objection, that'll be the order. So now, if you could do the other items.
Items one through five are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Specials members. Specials, see none. Let's prepare to vote. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, next, six through 10.
Items six through 10 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Without objection, those items are now before us. Okay, Mr. Alecan wants to hold item 10. Do we have cards?
Cards on item seven.
Item seven. Members, we're... Item six through 10. Any more specials? See none. Let's prepare to vote. Madam Clerk, if you would open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, I want to take a moment. Michael, maybe you could bring our distinguished guests up to the mic. Ladies and gentlemen, it's a pleasure to present to you... Phil, I'm talking about you! To present to you the former treasurer of the State of California, Phil Angelides. Why don't you come and say hello?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm honored, I'm just here as a citizen today, and it's my honor to be in front of each and every one of you. Thank you very, very much. Nice to see all of you. Thank you.
Welcome to L.A.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Give my regards to Sacramento.
Sure will.
All right. Madam Clerk, item eight and nine to go forth with. Mr. Labange?
I was gonna say, I was gonna vote for Phil, he gave the best, shortest speech of the week. All right.
I could say something, Tom, but I won't. And then Bill says, "Oh, really?" Okay, why don't we go to general public comment? These are the general public comment cards. Barbara Bradbury, if you would please come forward. Donna Pierman, Marion Fogler. Another general car? Okay. Ms. Bradbury, is that you? Please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is in regards to people posting yard sale signs. I'm gonna read an email that I sent to Wendy Gruel, being that she's running for mayor, which was on the 14th of March. Never received a reply. Dear Mrs. Gruel, congratulations on your success for running for mayor. Starting on February 21st, I have been dealing with numerous departments regarding... starting with Mitch Englander's office in Chatsworth, just to find out why it takes almost one and a half years to issue a fine concerning a sign showing an address. Our ex-taught-in-law resided at that address until she passed away in August of 2011. The property reverted to her mother, who resides in Lakewood, and has never lived at the gainer address, but she has been getting fine notices. While I have been trying to get some answers for her through the local councilman's office, she has gotten notice that this matter has been turned over to collections. Ever since February 21st, I have never gotten a return call from anyone I have left messages with that's not saying much for civil servants earning their salary, which we citizens provide through our tax dollars. Please check into this matter so it can get resolved. I don't feel that collections should have gotten involved until we got some answers. We have gotten the brush-off by everyone we tried to contact. If you want names and numbers?
Thank you. I'm gonna have Mr. Labange chat with you for a minute, and we'll see if we can't ensure that you get a return call. We can't promise you what the outcome will be, but we'll make sure someone will communicate with you. Okay, Ms. Pierman, you're next, followed by Marion, who just got a new cat.
Yeah, so did I. Oh, yeah, she just got a new hat. Okay, okay, let's... Okay, this is not acceptable, that the people in the Valley can only speak every other month. If you think that this is acceptable, coming down here and just only having the people speaking only this time, that's not right. I'm finding that there's... What's wrong with the city council is there's no connection to the people. That's what's missing, and why people are voting for Wendy Gruel is an anti-city council vote. They're going against the city... They're going against the city council because they're looking... It seems as though you people are not connecting, and the same way with... I'm sorry, with Eric Garcetti. You missed a good opportunity to be... Connect with the people by coming to the Valley, which is an area that's not voting. So, we can't have Matt Dowd win. People that... He comes down, he cusses and he swears, and this is the type of legacy we left behind by shutting off Van Nuys video conferencing. We need to open that back up again, encourage people to come down, and encourage people to, you know, to speak their minds, because right now, most of the people in the Van Nuys are mad and they can't take it anymore. I mean, the Valley are mad and they cannot take it anymore, and it's holding it, and there's vesting in them, and all they know is they hate City Hall. If they could come down here and say exactly what's bothering them, then these people, they may be... They may see their council members as people who care about them. Right now, you seem as though you're little kings over your little districts, and you want to be connecting with the people. If you only... Luckily, there was only one person running.
Thank you, Donna. Thank you, Donna, and it is good to see you again. Marion Fogler, Sharon Brewer, Nina Royal. Hi, Marion.
Yeah, hi. You know, as I'm saying here, that the connection is so much better than if you guys had met here every month and have the video conferencing on here, because actually, Matt Dowd, with his vulgarity and nasty talk, I don't know how you people can reward this kind of behavior. It's unacceptable. I can't believe the city council just sits back and just votes to turn off the video conferencing with the budget last year. You should have had it taken out, bifurcated, and taken out. I don't know why you people didn't do it anyway. Make the long story short here is that the... We have a big, major problem. It's a security problem in the country, and that is the hospitals. The doctors, the nurses, they don't know what they're doing. When they cared for my dad, he fluctuated with his blood sugar, and they didn't care. They dropped him and broke his back and all this stuff. They just... They... Over there, in my opinion, there was not... There was a lack of care, and a friend of mine was in the U.S. Air Force. He served in Vietnam. Can you please pray for him now on the Journey motion? I'm sorry to tell you this, but he died January 18th with, you know, with the respect of the Air Force taps, and they were supposed to give him a heart, and they didn't do it, the VA, and they let him die. He was a common tissue donor. So, we have a problem in this country, is that the hospitals do not give the care, and we need to do something about this, because this is a security issue that they're gonna allow our people to die.
Thank you, Marion. So, if I could get Sharon Brewer, followed by Nina Royal, followed by Rick Nightingale. Good morning, Ms. Brewer.
Good morning. Welcome to my City Hall in the Valley. Sharon Brewer, public comment. First, the Daily News, April 2nd, 2013, proposed $3 billion bond for street repairs revived. Hearing April 16th at 6:00 p.m., Van Nuys City Hall. The public hasn't been notified of this. I don't know whether Empower in L.A. has sent it out, but this is a public announcement. Two, reinstating video conferencing at Van Nuys City Hall. Less than $10,000. Solution: Have each of the six Valley council members use $2,000 of discretionary funds for a total of $12,000, so that their Valley constituents can weigh in on issues. That's the least that you could end up doing. Also, I would like to take and thank my councilman, Dennis Zion, for having the community meeting last night on the Discovery House that's impacting negatively the Reseda community. The addresses are 6956 Bertrand, 6957 Infeld, 17900 Van Owen, 6953 Infeld, and 6930 Falcom. Two of these houses are across from an elementary school, Bertram Elementary School, and the people yesterday were upset. It was very well attended. Channel 4 went and copied... Copied. Covered it, and I'm just glad that they ended up going, and it's something that has to be dealt with, and it could be happening in your other council districts. So, again, thank you, Councilman Zion. The other thing is, the Daily News talked about the budget advocates and them wanting to have the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment funding restored, and the neighborhood council's going up to $50,000. I disagree. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Nina, are you still here? Yes. Followed by Rick Nightingale, followed by Candido Moras. Yes, Ms. Royal.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, council members. Subject matter, SB 1818. As you know, I sit on the Tahunga Neighborhood Council and as well as the Land Use Committee. SB 1818 is destroying our neighborhoods. We are not saying that you should not have affordable housing. We do have a new project going in on Day Street, just behind Foothill Boulevard, which is a good project, and we support it wholeheartedly. However, we have one that's going in on Samoa, and there is another one slated that's also going on Foothill that is not appropriate. The city needs to revise their SB 1818 allowances for men use, because they are destroying our neighborhoods. You should not be able to bypass the specific plans of communities, the community plans. Please, we want you to address this. I understand there's probably no chance of that happening, but we intend to get all 95 neighborhood councils behind this, and we will be going to City Council and asking you to please amend. We're not asking you to negate the whole plan. We're not asking that at all. We want you to modify it so that it is sensible. Right now, it is not. It allows developers to have their way, to do anything they want, and this is not right, because it is destroying the quality of life of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nightingale, good to see you again. Followed by Candido, followed by stranger Chuck Tenen. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. First of all, I hope you guys out there will vote for Dennis Zion for Controller. You know, I mean, he's here all the time. He'll come out here in the audience, talk to you. I'm sure his office will be open to the public, too. So, that's another thing. Mayor, I'm sorry, I hope you go for Wendy Gruel. Be the reason, because Garcetti, he wants to give the farm away. Everything is just give it, give it, give it, just the way he votes all the time and so forth. Gruel and Minette, she's a Valley girl. She'll turn around, maybe we might get something out of City Hall and come to the Valley, because we get absolutely nothing from the council or the City of Los Angeles. Mr. Laban, I'm gonna let you, you're not at your seat, but I will allow you, so go ahead.
Mr. President, the Speaker said the city does nothing for the Valley. I wanted to meet him at the ropes. I have a nice pad here. I want you to tell me what you want done, sir.
I got the gloves.
And I want to help you. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Pres, Mr. Weston.
Good morning.
We want to thank you for coming to the San Fernando Valley. Again, I'm represented by Councilman Mitch Inglis. Proud to be represented by him. Mr. Zine, we look forward to you becoming our next City Controller. And I want to echo the sentiments of a lot of people in this great city that Mr. Zine is someone that you can approach, that will listen to you, will never turn his back to you and is always available to children, to, excuse me, to the children of this community. Uh, again, every year, Christmas, whatever holiday it is, elementary schools, whatever it is, Mr. Zine cares about children. Mr. Zine, we also want to give you, um, something that maybe can help you with City Controller, the Abatement Program, the abandoned vehicles. This is Mr. Danny Dantona and again, you know, John Camaro with the Knights Columbus. There are so many vehicles in our attempts to clean up our neighborhoods. The, the problem with abandoned vehicles is out there. I would hope that as City Controller, you'll take a look at, at that problem. There's a lot of money to be generated out of there, especially with the ACE program. There are many things that we can do. But if we can eliminate the abandoned vehicles in our city, great things and the money that could come into our general fund. Uh, so again, we look forward to having you as our City Controller, sir. And lastly, Mr. Weston, this is my fourth time that I've been here for Ms. Benavides. We submitted over 1,300 names for her to get the ballpark over at Delano Park named after her. We're just waiting from, uh, some word from the 6th District, but I hope, Mr. President, that you won't allow this to slip through the cracks because, again, she is a mother not only to her children but also to the kids of the City of Los Angeles and San Fernando Valley. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you and good to see you again. Thank, thank the three of you. Chuck Tenon, my old fishing buddy. Where have you been? Don't start his time yet. Where have you been?
I've been working on a project for the 9/11 Foundation to help build their museum that's gonna be dedicated to the survivors, the victims, the rescuers and the heroes of our great nation and all those that died. We're, put up something to where people donate to that.
So, now I know what you, you've been doing. You've been busy.
And we, we got a new boat.
Now we can start his time.
I was gonna say, we got a new boat to take kids out on whale excursions. Good morning, Council President Weston and members. I stopped by today for several reasons. To give Herb Weston his report card as City Council President. I'm happy to say he's doing a great job for this city. He's a leader. He runs a tight ship, walks with a big stick, and he does his job well in this, in leading this city forward. He's fair and polite to everyone that speaks at City Council meetings, especially public comment and in dealing with the tormentors, hecklers, disruptors and the people that make mockery of our City Council. The entire City Council members do a great job in supporting him and making the city the best in the US. Every day, they're working very hard to make the city of ours a better place to live. And anyone that speaks at public comment should know that they have the right to speak at public comment, but it should not be abused or used as mockery, but to express one's comment, which they have the right to do so. And that the City Council members, uh, do respect them and they do not respond to comments on any issue. So, if you have an issue or a concern, go to the appropriate City Council Committee meeting and they will respect and respond to your issues and comments and they will respond to it. Last, when Janice Hahn was in City Council, we were working on a song project called "Stop the Violence, We Can All Live in Peace." She tried for over a year to get a kids choir to sing the song and one of her dreams was for them to sing it at City Hall. It was gonna be used to support programs for kids and to stop violence and gang prevention. And now that gun control's a big issue, City Council members, if you know of a kids choir that would like to sing this song, we'll record it and we'll present it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck, and it is good to see you again. I'm glad you're okay. Alrighty, that ends general public comment. Uh, Mr. Alacon, is he? You wanna take, do you wanna take up, um, item 10 was held special, what, Mr. Parks?
Eight and nine, fourth with for Mr. Garcetti.
I, I sent them. I already did that. Um, Mr., are there cards on 10? Okay, Richard, it's you.
Yeah, we actually have, uh, the Department of Library and Department of Community Development, uh, joining me with his. This is an informational, uh, action to inform the council and the public that this, we, we all know that this is Literacy Month, National Literacy Month, but at the same time, it is also National Financial Literacy Month. And so, we have, uh, for the past several years, been involved in informing people about financial literacy. And far too many people, particularly during the advent of the foreclosure crisis, were, had fallen into a gap and as a result of their, uh, their inability to assess their own financial capacity when, when taking out a loan. Uh, they were gamed by the industry to a large extent, which has been demonstrated in court actions. Uh, and, and so, we have a lot of repair that needs to be done, but at the same time, uh, we believe that we should empower individuals by giving them the skills so that they can manage their financial affairs with, uh, more acuity and, and success. Um, and so, I want to commend, uh, the Community Development Department and the Library Department for, for, again, working on this venture to inform our public. And I've invited John Zabo, our City Librarian, to talk about how they're going to do that with the library system. And of course, Greg Irish, uh, who has been around here for 180 years and, and knows more than any other individual in the entire system from CDD. Uh, Mr. Zabos.
Good, Chuck. Sure. Uh, good morning. Well, it's a pleasure to be here and indeed, as you mentioned, council member, we are kicking off National Financial Literacy Month with, uh, what really is a, a day-long festival at the Central Library surrounding financial literacy and financial literacy topics. It starts at 10:30 and runs through the afternoon. Basic financial literacy courses, Money Management 101, Tax Assistance, uh, Educational Savings Programs, Programs on How to Buy Your First Home. Uh, and it'll be all day and it's a wonderful partnership with numerous, uh, community organizations as well as, of course, the Community Development Department. And the thing that, that I really want to point out is as excited we, as we are about tomorrow's event and as wonderful as it is, it's part of a broader emphasis on financial literacy and financial education at the Los Angeles Public Library. Uh, this is a wonderful role for our libraries to play. And we, for the last, you know, few years, particularly during these tough economic times, have tried to place an emphasis on this, uh, subject area to provide classes and workshops and other programs around these, these important topics. Because as you've, um, notably said, there's a huge need for this, this information. And the wonderful thing about this emphasis within the Los Angeles Public Library is that individuals who will be coming to the workshop tomorrow and to other, uh, financial literacy programming around the 73 libraries throughout the City of Los Angeles is that they will discover other things in our libraries that they will be able to take advantage of. Our Citizenship Initiative, where they can learn how to take that first step on the path to citizenship. Uh, children's programs, storytimes, all sorts of other things that they may be unaware of, that these financial literacy programs will pull them into our libraries. Uh, and so, I would also just like to extend a thank you to you, Councilmember Alarcon, for your, um, passion for financial literacy, your advocacy for it and, and for thinking of the library as being a great place for this to happen because it is. Uh, and I also want to mention that going forward, we have several other workshops planned. There are 12 of them currently on the calendar. People can find out about them by going to our website, coming into any of our libraries. We're calling them Money Matters Workshops and they're, again, throughout the City of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Greg Irish with CDD. You know, I, I want to give credit to two of my staff members, the Assistant General Manager, Robert Seines, and of course, Abby Marquez. They were the ones that formulated this partnership with the Library Department, well, with the LA Public Library. It's, it's something that, uh, we're hoping that this partnership will continue beyond just this initiative. But I want to say, you funded 21 family source centers that serve 50,000 people, those 21 are throughout the city. Uh, we focus on financial literacy, offering folks an opportunity or encouraging them to open bank accounts, to participate in seminars on financial literacy and getting their financial houses in order. Uh, again, this is the first, this is gonna be the second annual event. It was so successful last year, so we want everybody to come out and also remind them, even though there's, it's appropriate that this is Financial Literacy Month. April 15th is tax filing deadlines.
Yeah, council members, finally, I would like to remind you that, uh, we also are in the midst of, uh, an RFP process for the City Services Card. And there's, uh, this is a perfect marriage between, uh, the services of the library, library system with a library card, but at the same time, uh, an ATM feature, a debit card feature that would, uh, enable our, our constituents to, who do not have access to banking services, to, uh, participate in our banking, uh, uh, system. At the same time, we're, we're working with Metro to put a, a function that would enable them to get a MetroCard on the same card. And so, uh, this is a, a great time to educate the public about that. And I want to share with you that, um, 35 years ago, long before I worked for the City of Los Angeles, I worked two blocks from here at a young woman's job training program. And my job was to teach financial literacy to, uh, young women between the ages of 14 and 21 who, uh, were thrust into, uh, an adult lifestyle because they either had a kid or were thrown out of their houses or were, uh, independent minors. So, um, so it, it gives me great pleasure. I have said many times that our library system, while we know of libraries to be quiet, we need an activist, uh, general manager who, uh, creates a buzz in our library system. And that's exactly, uh, what Mr. Zabo is. He gets it. I'm, I'm, I, I want to say, I think he's one of the, the best new additions to our city system in the last several years. And, and, uh, our library system needs to recognize that illiteracy is a massive problem in the City of Los Angeles. It affects our productivity. It affects our well-being. It affects our, our, uh, families' capabilities of solving their own problems. Uh, and we need our library system to engage in the process of improving Los Angeles by creating more literacy throughout. So, uh, again, I encourage all of you to participate in your local libraries with the Financial Fitness Fairs, especially those who have the opportunity to go to the Central Library where the big event will be. Please, uh, don't hesitate to, uh, to have a fun time learning how to read better or just, uh, learning new information that you, you missed previously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now for, wait, wait, guys, wait for our library aficionado, Tom Laban.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. But, uh, Mr. Irish, thank you and the history. And, Mr. Alacon, it's amazing, in our jobs, what we usually get some of the greatest plays from is when we were young, doing things like you were doing two blocks away, helping young people learn how to get a job. Mr. Irish, your history, your great history with the city. John Zabo, your take action. He's not a general manager, he's the chief librarian. And, uh, that's a very important role because you're opening those doors. 71 libraries?
73.
73 libraries throughout the City of Los Angeles. Libraries and community centers. To get information is knowledge is power. I had to rise to thank them both, uh, for this too. And Mr. Alacon, for your leadership on this. Because you never know what happens when someone walks in a door. Nothing bad happens in a library. But when they walk out of that door, something good happens. So, I'm just proud to stand for our library system. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Laban. Let's, uh, Madam Clerk, prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
The ayes have it. Thank you, guys. Okay, members, what's before us now is item 7. It was held, kind of, by a card. But as I read the card, I do want to identify that the gentleman's name is David Wald and he's here to answer any questions. Uh, he does not wish to speak, but he is available to answer any questions if you have him. He's with Wald Realty Advisors. Why don't you wave your hand, Mr. Wald? Okay, I see you back there. All right, there are no speakers on the queue where it relates to this item. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
What's before this body?
Mr. President, uh, just for the record, for item 1, the ordinance will be held over for one week.
Yes.
And council has motions for post and referral.
Okay, consider them posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
Uh, announcements, members, Mr. Laban.
Well, I want to announce one of the greatest of all city employees, uh, is here visiting us, Bob Jedavisi, chief zoning administrator and his lovely wife. Uh, Bob was a, a victim of the Metrolink crash. Uh, but give Bob a big hand. He comes by and, as he always did. And the great thing that Bob would do when we were meeting at City Hall, he'd come down on the 6th floor and he'd walk and check in with all of us as a zoning administrator. You're a very special human being who did great land use for the City of Los Angeles and you're now, uh, working your way back. Bob Jedavisi, big hand.
Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just a quick announcement, tomorrow, uh, tomorrow morning, 9 o'clock, Pathways to Employment Youth Workshop, sponsored by the Northwest San Peter Neighborhood Council, the San Peter Rotary Club. It's gonna be held at the, uh, the John Ogier Campus, San Peter High School, John Ogier Campus at 3210 South Alma, 9:00 AM. Please join us, all, uh, all welcome. It's gonna be a great, uh, opportunity for youth to come and find, uh, employment opportunities, how to apply for a job, how to dress for an interview. And also, tomorrow at 10:00 is Opening Day Baseball at Bogdanovich Park. Please join me and a number of the, uh, the youth league, the, the kids all geared up, ready to go and all the coaches and, uh, the Wreckin Parks at the Bogdanovich Park. Hope to see y'all there. Thank you.
Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. Saturday, hold on a second. Technology at its finest here. The Reseda Neighborhood Pride Day, 6711 Chimanias and Reseda.